Okay, I'll give this a read. Selectmen's Office, Municipality of Maine, Acton, Maine, to Dennis Long III. The Selectmen of the Municipality of Acton do, in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the State of Maine, hereby appoint you as an Animal Control Officer within and for the Municipality of Acton until August 31st, 2017, given under our hand this 11th day of June, July 2017.
Make a motion, we appoint Dennis Long III as the Animal Control Officer.
Second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
See, we'll see. And the warrants this week.
Sign it, right?
Yep.
Because the current ACO handled the calls at the beginning of the month, we had the Treasurer prorate the 30-day stipend based on the 10 days that Mike had it, based on the other 21 days that Mr. Long will have it.
Moving on to C MMA Action Plan.
So, I have a meeting with Lance on Friday to go over the things that we have pending, kind of tell him where we're at and what we can and can't do, and should have more to report back to next week.
Okay. And the Mary Grant Policy.
So, this is on here from last week. We haven't, as far as I know, they haven't tied down the last few details that they're looking to get together as a committee, so it's just pending for now.
Okay. The Road Committee Ad-Hoc.
Old business from last week.
Yeah, we're meeting tonight at six, well, following this meeting, 6 o'clock, whichever one happens first, or last, or whatever. Yeah, we'll be meeting tonight. F Junkyard Ordinance, 8 Loop Road.
Can I go back, I'm sorry, real quick? So, the survey that Mr. Poyant drafted, that's going to be discussed tonight, and you'll be able to give me some direction, what you want to do with it?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so the Junkyard Ordinance versus 8 Loop Road. So, a few things to update on that. Ken Paul and I do have a meeting tomorrow at, Wednesday at 2:00 with the owner of 8 Loop Road. He will come here to the Town Hall, and we're going to sit down and meet with him. Code Enforcement did let me know today that there were only two unregistered cars there as of his last stop. The ordinance itself that you guys talked about possibly putting together, Ed has a meeting with the Planning Board Chair Thursday at 6:00, 6:30-ish, to see if it's something that the Planning Board wants to pick up and possibly draft. Code Enforcement Officer also gave me a copy of the International Codes. These are the codes, the law books that generally that he follows for building electrical plumbing, and they do make one for property maintenance code. So, if the Planning Board and the town decide that they're going to move forward with creating such an ordinance, we should probably consider purchasing this book. It's $43.
Okay.
So, that would really give you a lot of, you know, you could take that code book and go through and, you know, copy and highlight and scratch and figure out what you want and don't want in your proposed ordinance. I know that hopefully after Thursday, you'll be able to plan maybe a public hearing to see what the townspeople really want, how much stringent or leeway they want.
Okay, that sounds like a plan.
Do you want me to order the book?
Yes, please.
And you still have the packets, does anybody, MMA samples?
Yes.
Do you want me to get copies down to the Planning Board Chair?
Wouldn't be a bad idea, yeah.
Anything else I need to do on that?
No, I was going to say, just, I know the word junkyard ordinance really just pertains to automobiles, and so I just wanted to make sure that property maintenance was being covered under that as well.
I'll change the wording on the agenda going forward.
Okay.
And Ed, you, I mean, you've got to, you're going to be meeting with the Planning Board, so you know what they're looking for?
Yep.
Okay, and I'll see how quickly I can get you this book.
Secret ballot voting.
Just an old item. You guys asked me to contact Maine Municipal a few weeks back. You got a response on June 26th. Wasn't sure if it was coming off, or you were just, what you wanted to do with it.
I honestly, the way that email came in, it was like one of those long, and so when I tried to print it, it got cut off.
So, I'll make you a hard copy, and we'll put it on next week?
Yes. Don't know how that happens, but occasionally...
What is that for? Secret ballot voting for everything?
Okay, so somebody came to the podium not too long ago and mentioned that the town meeting has such low attendance, and that we have a higher attendance during elections behind the curtain, and had suggested, is it legal for town meeting style to go to behind-the-curtain voting, secret ballot?
That's doing away with the town meeting?
That's what it would essentially do. And the email is, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you. So, Ed was still the Chair at the time. He, he just wanted to hear from Maine Municipal as far as if it was something the town was going to consider, and they would have public hearings, and they would, you know, it would be a long process, and it's only something you can do at an annual meeting, so it's way down the road. This just talks about the process and what it would take to get there, but similar to like if they ever decided to go with a charter, I mean, it's a long process and drawn out. There was some talk, I know amongst the Board, too, that of possibly putting certain things on the school article, the school budget vote, you know, a lot of the housekeeping ones about the tax rate, the abatement rate, those kind of things, and then maybe moving some of your bigger ticket items to the election day, the Tuesday before, so that more people would, you know, come out and vote on it. But it's very preliminary at this point.
Yeah, we're looking into it.
It's all about trying to get more people involved in the voting process. So, make it easier for people and more accessible, so.
Is it possible to have, during the town meeting, someone ask to have this particular item as a secret ballot? You're not going to want a secret ballot on all the various articles, but there may be some which some people may want.
I think they try, you're supposed to go to the podium to ask questions, so the people at home can hear you.
Brendan.
Give me a time, I want to process the question again, go ahead.
Is it possible to keep the town meeting? That is such an important New England tradition, allowing people to get up and speak for or speak against something. Is it possible that we could have a town meeting such that if the voters there wanted to make it a secret ballot, they could make it a secret ballot, and everyone would be handed out papers numbered 1 through 10?
I kind of feel like that process that was brought up that day at the town meeting and you...
Yes, and you're right. As clerk, I can tell you that it's the voters' right with any article to make a motion to vote on, vote on an article by secret ballot, and she's right. One of the ones, I think, when we got to the salaries, when we got to the salaries, someone made a motion on Town Floor to vote on it by secret ballot, and you have to have 2/3 to vote, and that particular one failed. But they do have the option on every article.
Although it's not very oftentimes realized by many people sitting in the audience.
Right, no.
You're right. But we, like we said, it's the preliminary research, yep. So, moving on to H Deputy Car.
You throw me off with the letters that kind of, you're like, what?
Sorry, Deputy Car.
So, okay, so a couple of things with this. The, so the townspeople in both Acton and Chapley approved the car. We did put a call into County, and I think we kind of talked about this, that the only thing that the town is allowed to do at this point is pay the bill. They're handling everything. They've told us that a car's been ordered. We spoke to them just once right after town meeting. Ed sent me an email about it this morning, so I'm going to forward that directly to the Sheriff as well, and be sure that we can see that that process is going on now.
Okay, York County Budget Memo.
So, you guys all got it? We tabled that last week because you wanted more time to review it. What's your pleasure? Here it is.
Did you have it?
I looked it over.
Yeah, you guys looked it over, and I'm good. I just wasn't, I didn't know what it was, and I just wanted to read it.
That's fine.
Uh, should I give you a summary at home here? So, basically, there, the county has decided to close the Alfred, the York, and the Springvale County Courthouses and combine it to Bedford, and that sounds all good, except that when some other people that were not on the committee to choose the location were investigating that it would cost the taxpayers, the county taxpayers, an additional $500,000 a year, $502,000 a year, and that would be pushed back onto the taxpayers. And so, there's a group of people who are trying to fight that, and that's what signing this letter is to, as a Select Board to, yes, we agree, we would like for you guys to keep this investigation going on to eliminate that increase in taxes, so.
I think that most of them have been following some of the articles and emails. Most of the municipalities on this side of the southern, you know, that are going to be affected, really, you know, seem to support it. Did they, I don't, did they invite anyone from Acton to be on the committee when they chose the new location?
No.
Not that I recall.
And it's that much of an increase, even by consolidating all those into one?
Yeah, a lot of it is transportation, because they had, if they were going to choose Alfred, it would have been right next to the jail, and they wouldn't have had to pay transportation costs to get anybody to and from the courthouses. They would use an underground tunnel to get the inmates there. And it also had to do with district attorney space, and there wasn't space, they didn't, in the building of this courthouse, they didn't have room for the DA's.
In the current one?
In the one that, the one they're planning. And so, what they were going to do was have them lease space in another building that was like 20 miles away, so it was, it's just, it really didn't make sense, and if anybody wants copies of any of the information, we can, we can do that. It's quite a story.
But is it a done deal? I mean, are they definitely closing and moving, or?
I don't think it's done. It sounds, actually, I think it's done, but they're trying to avoid these costs somehow to get, I don't know who else to pay for them, but maybe to build on DA space, or, and certainly, they did talk about using cameras for the inmates, so that they never had to leave the jail to go to court. So, there were other...
And most of the phones can look at FaceTime.
Right, so, yeah. But this part of it is to fight that that money does not get pushed down through, trickle down through the taxpayers somehow to avoid that.
Fair.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is this for the Superior Court, the large court in Alfred, or what effect does the district courts have, the one that's in Sanford?
It would close.
Or in Springvale?
Springvale would close, Alfred would close, York would close, and you'd have to go to Bedford.
So, all three of those?
Consolidating.
Consolidating it all in one place in Bedford? Okay, and, okay. Is there a reason why they wanted to do it? They really think they can save money?
I really don't know. They thought they were going to save money, but it's not proving that.
And are they asking for public opinion? Are they asking for...
It's too late for that.
Too late for that.
There was a commission made back in August, July, August, September. It was really quick. It's almost like they, I don't want to say this.
Don't say it out loud, but everyone's thinking it.
But, so Alfred, the location in Alfred, the land would have been given. They chose a location in Bedford that's costing...
That they had to buy.
That they had to buy.
So, yeah, maybe I can look into it a little, just confirm that it's a done deal, see if we have any input or any, I mean, do you think it's...
So, we were not asked as a town to make a comment on it, or were citizens asked to make a comment?
Not as far as I was notified. I mean, no one came to me.
So, the letter from John Sylvester, Chairman, York County Budget Committee, it says, "We are accepting of the fact that the new courthouse is being built in Bedford. We are not accepting, however, of the impacts that this will have on the county budget and therefore each and every one of the municipalities."
So, it doesn't sound like it's done.
Yeah.
It does smell.
Any idea what year, what are they saying that? I'll see if I can find a little more history on it, but...
And so, the last paragraph here is, "If your Town-City Board approves of this resolution, we ask that you sign and mail it to Chief Justice Lee Softly," if I say that right, "and return a copy of my attention in a self-addressed stamped enclosed envelope."
Hi. I'm not sure I understand this correctly. This was proposed to save money, but it's not going to save money, and we don't have any say about it.
No.
Sounds like government, as usual.
Yes.
Yeah. And I think Woodson had...
John.
Woodson, he had put a bill forward to try to stop it, and it got shot down.
Five hundred and eighty, represented.
What's his name? As you know, at its workshop on Wednesday, May 24th, 2017, the Joint Standing Committee on the Judiciary voted unanimously to kill LD 1264 Resolve regarding the combined courthouse in York County. And so, their, his resolve was to, I believe, stop it.
Stop it.
And the Legislative Committee did spend about 10 minutes in discussion about the bill.
You can't make those comments when we're sitting up here on camera, because it makes me... And before, I'm not 100% sure that that's how John's bill was going, so let me just get a little information for next week, at least to clarify that, so we're not pointing fingers towards either party, figure out who was for and against, but that, if nothing else, is going to help the tax piece of it, right? It's going to help say that we don't support the tax increase, but it sounds like it went to Augusta and was voted on consolidation, and I can't find much about it online.
Yeah. So, do we have, yeah.
Make a motion that we sign the resolution to deal with the York County Budget Memo.
And we've had quite a bit of discussion, so all in favor? Okay, while they're signing that, we'll move on to the Tennis Courts for the rec.
Yeah, so I saw the emails going back and forth. We were able to get that straightened out, so that they met up with the paperwork they needed from Maine Municipal, and I think they're all set to open them up, so.
I'll look forward to that.
Yeah.
And the recycle bins.
So, we talked about these over the last couple of weeks. With this particular company, you did have to order a minimum of 100, so to get the 850 price, we could order 50, and it'd go up to 950. Checked a couple other places through EcoMaine that had some ideas. Really, the thought is, is it something that the Board, if I can find it for a minimum around that amount, is it something that we want to order 50 and see if, you know, the townspeople are interested in them? Essentially, we would sell them for the, you know, cost, so you're looking at probably $10 with their part of shipping. But, you know, we're going to pay it out front, and if for some reason we don't...
I'd feel more comfortable with a lower quantity.
So, you think 50 is a decent amount?
Yeah.
I can't imagine people wouldn't want to have them in use.
I know, I see a lot of people come in with bags, and it just looks cumbersome.
Yeah, a lot more convenient, so.
Would you pay $10 for one? Huh? See, I personally wouldn't, so. You have a bunch?
Yeah.
Do you have 50 that you want to?
Probably could scrape up that money.
All right, so I'll see what the best price I can get. We'll start with ordering 50, we'll advertise and see if we can sell them.
Is that going to have our name on them, do you know, or?
No, it's not going to have that price. It's just going to have the little recycle emblems on the front, just like the picture that you picked out.
Okay. It does seem like...
Has anybody asked about these totes?
No, I think the conversation, no, the conversation came up, I think, when Elise rearranged all of our recycling and bins here. She'd asked kind of why we didn't have any, and asked to look into it, so I spoke to Bob, and he recommended this company, and we just, you know, I mean, for $10, they may sell.
Yeah.
Show of hands, does anybody out there want a recycle bin?
Maybe.
Maybe, got one maybe.
I have many totes as well.
Huh? You got totes?
I have many totes as well.
Man, I don't know what the difference is, other than, you know, what one at Walmart would go for. I guess that's the only one.
These are a lot heavier, I know, they're...
Heavy duty. They're not going to rip. Yeah, I just would like to encourage the town to recycle more. The more we recycle, the more money we get back from the transfer station there. They do a really good job over there, you know, keeping, keeping their budget tight and making money on the recycles, but they can only do so much if, you know, you get a recycle out there.
Start some kind of program to try to get people to buy things, too.
Yeah. All right, moving on. Eagle Road runoff.
So, this was on your list last week, the letter that we received from Bud Morin. I spoke to Mr. Morin, as you're aware, and I spoke to Mr. Mooney. Mr. Mooney doesn't feel like the issue is caused from Zagarven Road up there. He doesn't think the two are related. I mean, you know, he's seen the letter, he's spoken to Bud, he's, we talked about the culvert that wasn't, didn't have the back on, it wasn't capped off. He thinks it's a combination of things from the logging that's going on there, and he doesn't really think it's a town issue. So, I think that when you and I spoke individually as the liaison, there was some talk about trying to schedule a meeting with you, Mr. Morin and Mr. Mooney, and go out and take a look at it on-site.
Yeah, and that, Mr. Mooney came in and spoke with me and explained that it...
Did I say it right? He basically didn't think, okay.
Yeah, he didn't think it was a town issue, in that he offered to talk to Bud and let Bud know that, you know, DEP is the next step.
Okay, so, you know, we don't need to meet with him. So, do we need to follow up with Bud, make sure he's all set?
Yeah, I'd like to see if he's happy.
And if, for some reason, he's not, I can schedule the meeting?
I don't know. Yeah, I mean, obviously, maybe if he's not happy...
I mean, if he's not at this point, if Scott's spoken to him, then the next step would be to get you in.
If he feels the town has done what they could do for him, you know, is what I, I guess what I meant.
I'll give him a call.
Reserve accounts.
This is just as old business. We talked about, once the audit is complete, scheduling a meeting with the Selectmen, possibly the Warren of Finance, anybody in the public that wanted to get information, get more information and clarity, hopefully, once and for all, on these different types of accounts that keep coming up at town meeting.
Okay.
And school budget.
And bridges.
What are we doing with that?
What do you mean?
Well, we just talked, you know, you just mentioned the reserve accounts. Are we going to schedule some kind of a...
Yes, we're waiting for the audit to be done.
It's not done yet?
No, the fiscal year just ended June 30th. They have a preliminary audit, they came in three days.
That's right, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
$10 million they audit, it takes a little while, no.
So, we are going to schedule something so that, you know, we can clarify this for once and all, for all?
Yes.
Thank God.
Thank you.
Bridges.
So, another pending item from last week was regarding the two bridges that you gave me the papers, gave me papers on and wanted to clarify who owned them.
Okay.
I spoke to Mrs. Hart, she was in the office on Other Business, and she gave me the name of a contact that had taken over for a longtime person that was in that position that retired. He was actually out the week, that week of 4th of July. I did speak to his assistant, who assures me that the information that we found on the website was accurate, and that if, in those columns, because they have all the bridges, did you print that off, or did you?
Cindy printed it off.
Okay. That, that information that's on there, as far as they're concerned, is accurate. Now, he is due to be back in the office on Thursday, and certainly, she encouraged us to call again, but, you know, kind of like me saying, "On behalf of you," I mean, I believe the Board would do this, or what, you know what I mean? She says that it, she believes it's accurate, and that he'll follow up, he'll, he'll back that, but certainly didn't want to be put on the spot until we spoke to him directly.
Jerry Douglas had confirmed it before...
He's the gentleman that retired, right?
Yeah.
Right. And Jerry Douglas, I'm sorry, I couldn't remember his name, this assistant worked for him first, so she's still there, it's the same, same position, which is helpful, because God love him, you know, the people come and go to have that assistant, that, you know what I mean? So, she said that, I mean, she's confident that that information is accurate, so we're doing a little more, a little more digging, and hope to have more information. And to be honest with you, I was going to, going to speak to her again early afternoon, something, oh, we had talked about the Road Hawk meeting possibly being canceled because of people not being available, and just to be honest and clear, when I, when I heard that Mrs. Hart may not be here, I put it off until tomorrow, because I didn't want to get into the bridges without her here.
Yeah.
So, that was, you know, I'm just saying, it just kind of all happened that way, so I didn't push it towards the end of the day.
These are for the three bridges, the Bracket, Hopper, and Canal?
I was only given two.
Bracket, yeah, just the two, Canal and Hopper.
Canal and Hopper.
Yes.
Can I give a brief?
Yes.
Okay, should I go up there? Acton has 10 bridges that are listed in the inventory. Only four of them have Acton's responsibility. Two of them are in good shape, and two of them are in poor shape. And we should have somewhere the reports from 2015, because going from what I had, which was 2011, and I forget the date on the other, bridges are rated from 1 to 100. And the Hopper Road Bridge at that point was a 30, and the Canal Bridge was a 22. And I mean, when you're under 50, that's a candidate for reconstruction. It's no longer repair. So, this is something we have to start addressing. I know that Chapley puts $50,000 a year aside for bridge repair, but we need to, if we can get a plan, chances are there will be an infrastructure bill. And where it's interstate, we missed out last time on tiger grants, but if they come up again, this is specifically for interstate bridges, and we can jump into that.
What are the other two bridges?
The other two...
Canal and Hopper are the two under 50. What were the two?
The one on West Shore Drive and Shady Nook.
And that one's the Newfield.
Yeah, those are our, our four. We have responsibility, half with Newfield on one, half with Milton on another.
Right.
Yeah.
Newfield, we just spent time with them, working on the Shady Nook Bridge.
Yeah, and that's in good shape. We shouldn't have to worry about it.
Sorry, not to interrupt, I have a lot of files on bridges, stuff that, you know, from when Mrs. Yatton was, we've combined and put together, so maybe sometime, actually, Cindy, we could come in and we could go through it together and try to find those reports.
I'd be happy to. I brought a book on them, too.
All right, call ahead, we'll schedule something.
Those numbers are depressing. From 1 through 100?
If she said those numbers were from 2011, so it sounds like they do a bridge report every four years. Is that right, Cindy?
Pardon?
They do a bridge report every four years?
Every two.
Two, and so the last one was...
We should have a 2015 report in hand now.
Right, but yours was from 11?
One was from 11, and one was later, one was earlier than that. They were, I took what they had on their website.
Yeah.
And hopefully, you can get the 2015.
And we may have them.
And if they haven't inspected yet in 2017, it would be good for people to be there so that they know what they're talking about.
Yeah, if you can have the assistant find out when they're being inspected, I wouldn't mind being there.
Is that something you want to try to get the Road Commissioners?
Yeah, they should be there.
All right, it's, we're in, what, July, so let me see where they're at.
Website.
Website. So, we started, we got some suggestions from the website, we started making some changes to it. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to go on there and look, but we've, we've added to the Selectmen and the Planning Board, we've created a base page. The Selectmen's is done, it's got the picture of them, it's got all the contact information, phone numbers, emails, direct links when the meetings are. We changed some of those. When you're on the homepage, all of the listings on the, on the side, like the library and the school, you no longer go to a page that says, "Click here to be connected to the library." Now, when you click on that, it's a direct link there, so we're, we're skipping the middle page. We've renamed a lot of those on the left, changed the business directory to make sure that it's, so it's not a PDF being changed in different places. We've copied and pasted the text on there. We've done quite a bit considering the vacation time last week, and so, still open suggestions, but I encourage you to take a look at it and see what other things you want to do.
And we welcome feedback to, from the community. If there's something you'd like to see on the website, let us know.
Hi, everybody. Brendan? Brendan Meehan. Susan noted it, she saw it just before I left.[1695.87]
So, still open suggestions, but I encourage you to take a look at it and see what other things you want, um, to do.
And we welcome feedback to, from the community. If, if there's something you'd like to see on the website, let us know.
Hi, everybody. Brendan Meehan. Susan noted it. She saw it just before I left. She couldn't make it today, but she did know, saw, see it and she, she mentioned it'll look good.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Moving on to new business, we have the personnel policy to discuss.
Guys, have your copies?
I do.
You all set in?
I don't have my copy.
So, well, the board decided last week or so that we're gonna start looking at a policy, um, pretty much each week. So, we've had a couple of things come up, um, that we need to just kinda, do you wanna just go through it or do you wanna go through areas that you have concerns? The, the first page is, is pretty basic. The six months of employment for the probationary, uh, equal opportunity employer, some of that stuff's required by law. The employment categories is pretty much spelled out based on, for benefit purposes. It's twenty-one hours, the per diem, temporary, full-time. Um, I know I emailed this to you guys. Was any concerns with the front?
No. Oh, um, so, okay, so article, it goes from Article Four, employment categories A, B, C, D, and then you go to the next page and it says D. Oh, wait, it was page two. I didn't get page two.
You don't get every page, Elise.
One, three, four, five, six, seven. I don't have two.
This one doesn't either.
Is it front and back?
Yeah, it's on the backside.
No, I don't. It goes from Article Four to Article Seven. Okay, so let me just.
You can pull it up on your phone as well.
Um, I'm, okay, so Article Six, it goes A, B, C, D.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Mine doesn't have two either. Uh, what am I doing, policies? I gotta have it in front of me. I'm not gonna be able to follow along.
Oh, you don't have a sheet in front of you?
Well, mine doesn't have two either.
It's just a matter of changing office manager to TA, to, to town administrator.
Yeah, where were you at?
Uh, Article Six D.
Six?
D.
Okay. Yep, sorry. Yep, gotcha. Yep, got that. Emergency closings, yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to get, yeah, I didn't see five and six, so unless you, don't mind me reading it right now.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Did you read it yet? I don't know why I didn't notice that.
Well, you know what's weird? Look, Article Two, I mean, uh, page two is not on the, um, the website either. Goes from one, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. It goes front and back.
Yeah, so it's per diem.
Let's skip page two. You're gonna have to sign it anyways, so we don't have to make it, let's skip page two so I can print it and you guys can take full time to review it.
All right, I'll read it later.
So let's go to page three.
Or, or page three, I think, was fine.
That was basically the holidays.
Page three had the, the town administrator change, sorry.
Yep, got it.
And then we're going to Article Ten for PTO and we're gonna change B a little bit.
Okay, so, all right, so paid time off. So paid time off benefits are available to full-time employees working in excess of twenty hours. All right. So employees accrued paid time off, what, what is the thought?
So the thought is, um, on B, we're going to add the word hourly to our, employees accrue paid time off at their following rates.
So B only pertains to hourly employees. Hourly employees accrue paid time, okay?
And so there's one, two, three, four, um, bullets in there.
Okay.
So the first bullet will read date of hire to two years instead of one.
Now, I thought in reading some of the emails and conversation, it was only the after two years you were changing because you had the grandfather situation, right?
No, I thought that we decided that there weren't any grandfa, anybody affected by grandfathered.
All right, well, let's go through how you think you want it and we'll.
Okay, oh, okay.
Because you did, didn't we add after the fact?
We did.
Okay.
I, I didn't take the notes down. You did?
No, I just.
Did you take the notes down good?
All right, well, let's go through it and we can figure out.
So date of hire to one year.
So date of hire to one year, so that would stay this point zero three nine.
Yes.
Stays the same.
After one year.
Because, all right, so there's two employees that are in the one year, two year. So if you change the amount of years, if you change the, um, the years there, you have to decide what you're gonna do with those two employees. Are you taking the vacation away? Are you grandfathering them?
We don't wanna change that, that date of hire.
So date of hire will be to one year.
Okay, so that's the same.
Date of hire to one year.
It's the second one that we want to change.
Second one would be after two year.
So.
So after two year would be, it used to say after one year.
All right.
No.
That's not what I recall in our, in workshop.
I didn't.
I, I thought, and correct, I thought what you, because of the two employees that you have, had one year and two year, that you didn't want it to change, you don't want to, do you wanna, are you okay with either grandfathering someone or taking away some of their vacation up to two years? Because I thought that what I heard you guys saying was that you didn't wanna make any changes to the current, so the only change that you were gonna propose for discussion was after two years at point seven seven, that changes to after five years.
I think that is what we talked about.
So your current employees.
Was that the, okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
Is that, so if you leave the date of hire to one year and the after one year, that won't affect your, you've got two employees.
Right.
One, one, five, ten.
Right. So the only change you're making is instead of saying after two years, you get to earn point seven seven times, now they have to wait till they've been there five years.
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
And the thought behind that was because you didn't want to have to grandfather or change people.
Yeah.
It doesn't take away from anything anybody has right now.
Right, 'cause you have one one-year employee and one, it's almost two year. And they're already being paid at those other rates, so.
Yes.
All right, but you still want it to say hourly?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, because the, the rest of that sentence says date of hire to one year equals point zero three nine times hours worked. And so we were gonna do salary at, we were gonna add a sentence that said salary employees accrue at ex, um, expected weekly hours.
Okay. So essentially what we're doing is employees accrue their PTO, their, whether, whether we call it vacation time, sick time, flex time, whatever. They accrue it based on how many hours they work. So if my assistant works twenty hours one week, she might, she'll get point zero three nine that week. If she works forty hours the next week, she's actually gonna get point three nine of forty hours. So, so it's multiplied times the amount of hours actually worked, right?
For hourly.
For hourly employees, okay. Salary employees, you want it to be based on?
What they are expected to work.
What they're expected to work. So.
What their salary.
What they've been hired to.
Okay.
Right.
So I'm hired as a forty-hour employee, so.
You can go up to forty hours.
So I'm gonna earn always on forty hours. So even if it's an election and town meeting week and I work fifty hours, I'm only earning vacation based on forty.
Yes.
Got it. Salary employees, so say it again how you want it worded?
Salary employees accrue PTO based on their expected salary hours. Contract hours.
Yeah, we don't actually have contracts.
Okay, they don't contract, but agreed upon or something. Let me, I'll.
Figure out what that word is.
I'll figure a couple of words, yeah. Okay, I gotta bring it back to you to draft.
Yeah.
But that's really what it's doing. So hourly is based on how many they physically work. Salary is gonna be based on you're being paid on for that many hours.
Yep.
Got it. All right. Anything else on the PTO?
And that was it so far. I mean, I gotta read page, uh, Article Five, Six.
Duty, political activities. No, anything else?
No.
All right, so for next week, I'll get page two and I'll give you a draft for that piece of it.
Okay.
Um, for that middle piece, see if I can.
Good. Moving on, moving on to mass gathering permit.
Is that time of the year for the, Ed, do you remember? I'm gonna put Ed on the spot.
Vacation, uh, the, uh, Vacation Land Volkswagen?
Awesome. Vacation Land Volkswagen.
Oh, with the fairgrounds?
Yes, they do this.
I only know it 'cause they sent me a reminder card.
They sent us, they sent you some fly, some flyers, so.
I've gone to the past.
They've done this, I, I don't know how many years in a row now, so.
Yeah.
Um, I double-checked with all of the parties at B. We've never had any issues with them. Their liability insurance is here, um, and they've paid their fee.
Pretty much a one-day event that kinda spills into.
Any type of Volkswagen, you go down there.
Volkswagen, bus, commingue, year.
Car show type?
Yep, pots and.
Oh, they sell, like, it's like a what meat?
Yep. I make a move, we, um, approve the mass gathering permit for, what's the actual name, Vacation? Yeah.
Land Volkswagen.
Yeah, Vacation Land Volkswagen Association.
Second to that motion.
All in favor? You can keep one of those.
Thanks. It's a fun little show.
Recycler.
Can I just have the, I'm sorry, if I don't get it back now, keep it in my pile in the order.
Recycler license renewal?
Another yearly event, Ed?
Yes, ma'am.
This is, uh, Lake Region Auto. He has to have this signed every year from the town for his, uh, dealer. This is Mr. Doyle up on East Road.
Recycler license zoning renewal. The completion of this form is required for the renewal of your recycler license. It must be completed and signed by an authorized town city official and the official's signature must be notarized. Okay.
Make a motion, we approve Lake's Region Auto, their recycler license zoning renewal.
Second to that.
All in favor? Just one signature?
Yes, ma'am.
He basically is a junkyard.
No, it's a dealer.
He's a recycler.
Yeah, he buys and sells cars and works on cars and whatnot, so.
He's at six oh four East Road.
Yeah, it's on the right here. Yeah, where the bear is out front, the wooden cow, the bear.
By the board signing it, it says that there's no zoning issues or concerns.
Yeah.
With Mr. Doyle's.
Department head job descriptions.
Okay, on your, uh, pending list from last week, so I, um, started with two because I don't wanna overwhelm you. Um, I made, I chose five job descriptions for the treasurer, finance director, CFO, whatever you decide to call that position. And then we brought, then I had five printed for the town clerk, tax collector, town administrator. So, happy reading.
Happy reading. I did notice that in the personnel policy, there's a section where we do your appraisal, that it's based on a job description.
Right.
And so I had a question mark there, but I knew it was coming.
Yep. So, um, code enforcement, when we change, when we, when the board changed his position to, uh, Director of Planning, what'd you say? A Director of Planning was a position, that's probably a year and a half, maybe two years ago, they did accept a job description. So once you get through these two, if you wanna review that one, you can, and then.
Okay.
Um, I don't know which direction you wanna head in.
So these, so, are you doing that right? We don't know how it's sorted. Yeah, there's five under each pa, pa, paper clip. So finance director has five.
Right.
Town clerk, town clerk, finance director. So that's your copy? Or maybe you had, you had a fourth? This four made up. Do you want one?
Oh, yeah, I think maybe that's, Alexis made the copies, thank you.
Oh, maybe shouldn't mean to hand that over. Maybe that's next. Um, New Bridge Road Public Access?
Uh, New Bridge Road Public Access is, um, so this is a little piece of land.
I was thinking bridge.
This is New Bridge Road. So, I, I, I thought I remembered the map a lot, but I don't. But, so, fill in the other two selectmen. So there's a, we've had a resident that has come forward, let me draw you a little map, because I'm, I'm good at that. That essentially, so Mrs., Mrs. Horn, and I apologize if I butchered her name, so Mrs. Horn owns all this land across the street on New Bridge Road. There is some sort of town piece, or public parking, apparently. The people park here and fish right on the water all the time on New Bridge Road. You know what area we're in?
On Horn Pond?
Horn Pond.
Okay, I know what you mean now.
So there's a long, if you look at the, the maps online, there's a long piece there and, and they say that it's constantly filled with fishermen and so forth right on the pond, and there's no problem with that. Mrs. Horn owns all this property over here. There's a little tiny lot that if you look at it on the maps, that it's actually not identified with any data. Next to that piece of, that little triangle is another piece that David Horn owns. Uh, so it looks like Mrs. Horn at one point owned all of it and then she split it up when they built the roads. Scott gave me a little bit of history on it. Elise came to me and asked me to do some research about who owns that little triangle piece, because there has been, um, apparently a lot of trash and littering and stuff going on.
Well, not there. What happens in the wintertime is it's a great piece of access to ice fishermen and nothing against ice fishing. You're welcome to ice fish on Horn Pond, but what that piece allows is direct access to go out to the frozen piece and, and a lot of trash is being left behind from that.
So it's not on this little, what piece is it on?
It's in the lake.
Oh.
They're leaving it out there in the lake. We're talking.
So the, so the trash isn't on that piece of property. It's on the lake?
It's just allowing easy access. People aren't going down to the public access boat launch or.
Cause there's one down here of them.
So it's not that, anybody can walk on and ice fish. That's great. But what happens is there's big groups going on and they're big trucks and whatnot and leaving things that shouldn't be left in a lake.
So determining the owner of that, what do we, what is the purpose?
What, what, if the town of Acton owns it, because it's, it looks like a boat launch, but it, it's not. And water that runs down that hill runs off down into the lake, so it's not, what do you call it?
Erosion or?
Erosion, um, where, along that piece where people do fish, it's vegetated. There's rocks, it's vegetated, so people kinda have to go between the vegetation. It's good, it's, it's just a, okay. But people are going on there with, and it was blocked off two winters in a row and the, the couple of residents that have come forward have noticed that they didn't ha, come spring, they didn't have the stuff washing up on their beaches that they did when it's open. So it's, it's an issue.
Okay, so what I found out, um, is it gonna help the issue a whole lot. So, I spoke to, um, I reached out to Mr. Lenkowski because I thought as our land use attorney, he'd be the one best suited to answer the question. The assessors are gonna be able to look at it, you know, there's, there's no, no immediate answer and, and he's having to do more research. What he said to me was, there's probably no chance the town of Acton owns it. If anything, when the, when Mrs. Horn's, when the property across the street was split up and the road was divided, somehow this little piece got left out of somebody's deed. He thinks if anything, it may belong to, you know, either her across the street or possibly the, the next to butter. But there's no deed reference that says the town of Acton owns it. So he wants a little more time. There's, um, some old plans, really old, that aren't online that he has to go over to the registry to look at. Um, so hopefully I'll have more information for you for next week. But if anything, he's really pretty confident that one of these two people are gonna own it, that, you know. Essentially, when they chopped out all those pieces, they just, nobody's, nobody included that little sliver.
It almost looks like a continuation of the roadway that just happens to be shaped like a boat launch. But, I mean, have you, have you gone by it?
I don't even, no, no, I don't. I go home.
Oh.
No. Um, so, I mean, that's all I, I have. I mean, it's not a lot, but he, you know, like you said, he, you know, he said, I'm, I'm pretty confident that, that you're gonna find that the town doesn't own it and I can probably find out who owns it for you, but Mrs. Horn owned all that. And that's what Scott told me, is that when the road was built, and I don't know if anybody, when the road was built, she gave certain pieces of it away and then started selling off some to family. Um, so he really kinda made it sound like it was just a missing, needed really to be added to somebody's deed, but I'll let you know for sure next week.
Okay, planning board appointment.
So we have one planning board position open. Um, wanted to talk about how you wanted to advertise that. We have, uh, one individual, Mr. Walter Scott, who has served on the planning board for the last X amount of years, um, that's not interested in being reappointed. So we thanked him for his time and efforts and, um, wanted to see how long you wanted to advertise it for. Put it out there and see if, get some.
Difficult to do, what, a couple of weeks?
Couple of weeks. I mean, we, yeah, I mean, depending on how much people come forward.
Yeah.
We'll do it with two weeks. I think they met, what's my calendar? They would've met what, last week, right? No, yeah, they met on the sixth, so they won't meet again until the twentieth, so. So we'll do the deadline, maybe like the end of the day on the twenty-fifth and see if we get any names for your meeting. Does that sound okay?
Sure.
Planning board. Anybody wanna be on planning board?
Planning board vacancy.
Paul?
Three Rivers Land Agreement.
So the closing came and went. Elise was there. She, uh.
Good job.
Yep, she did good. It all got done. So the only thing that was left behind was an agreement between Three Rivers and the town of Acton that Elise signed and our attorneys, you know, agreed with her that, that she would sign it. It basically is an agreement saying that the town will reimburse Three Rivers if the grant money comes in. Um, it did want more than one signature though, so she signed it that day. We haven't had a meeting since. So we're looking for two additional signatures on it. And I have two copies because the Three Rivers would like one as well.
We already voted to sign that, correct?
I mean.
Well, we voted.
We voted to sign the documents.
We voted to sign the documents.
Yeah. Okay.
I mean, the.
And back when we were doing the grant.
Yeah, I mean, you've made plenty of promises throughout the time that we give them the grant money back. And clearly we gave them the check, so.
Yep.
Once this is all finished up, what is the town going to do as far as expending money for parking lot and trail?
Us, there was, this grant is allowing, um, there's room, with, extra room with the grant money that's coming in that's going to be put towards that. And the Three Rivers Land Trust is going to be fundraising. The town has no obligation financially.
But if the town owns it and we're making it accessible, I'll be standing up soon. I am not hiding in a corner.
Get yelled at, will you?
If the town owns that piece of property and we want to make it accessible to the residents and we're going to be handicapped, resident, uh, compliant. resident, uh, compliant, does the town have any idea how much money is going to cost to build access to the top of that?
There's a great article, um, that Three Rivers Trust put out that explains that they have the money to, to do that, and they have the plans for that.
Yeah, and I, and I think, and don't quote me on this, but I'm pretty sure that they had to provide all that documentation before they even qualified for applying for the grant. I mean, I don't know about the maintenance of it. I mean, anytime you tar something in X amount of years, it's going to be, need to be retard. I mean, I can't imagine that they planned, you know, twenty years out, but I know that the basics in the beginning.
So Three Rivers is already anticipating building access ramp, handicap access ramp to the top of that hill? With the understanding that the town is going to reimburse Three Rivers for that? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, no, no.
No. We, the town applied for a grant.
Mm-hmm.
And the money that we get from the grant is in excess of what?
Is what, is in excess of what Three Rivers put forward?
Understand that. Does the town have any idea how much it's going to cost to build access?
I want to, I don't know why this number is in my head, but I have twenty-five.
I hear a hundred thousand dollars.
You hear, from who?
I'm not going to specifically say who.
At, at the end of the day, what it boils down to is, I mean, Three Rivers can't tie the town to anything without approval. They can't spend money they don't have. So, we could certainly invite Carl Davis to the meeting next week and try to get more clarification. I mean, there has to be, I mean, there's a little more to it, and I, you know, I wasn't, I don't have all the answers for you. But they, they did, I mean, the grant is in excess. They're expecting to get, to get the eighty thousand back. We, the townspeople agreed on the hundred thousand based on the warrant article. If the grant, let's just say, is for a hundred and fifty thousand, that's seventy thousand, they do have plans for, and they have already promised what they do for it. But as far as the exact numbers and what exactly they're going to do, I don't think we have, you know, I don't, I don't.
I mean, it's going to be a substantial expense to build an access ramp up to the top of that hill.
Was it their plan? I thought they were just starting with walking trails.
They're starting with parking lot and walking trails that will eventually lead to.
Just something to ponder.
Yeah.
It is going to be quite an expense. I know that the guy, the owner of the property next to the access way has cleared his land of timber. So I think he anticipates expanding his sand pit.
But, I mean, the townspeople would still have to vote and approve any expenditures.
Exactly. So, just something to ponder.
I'll see if I can get some more information from Carl.
Uh, building permit refund.
So, Mr. Paul approached us about a possible refund for a permit that was issued in the last fiscal year. The permit was issued in March. The only reason the check's already cut is because we have to close out our books. We can only do so many warrants from sixteen, seventeen, so it's not signed. It's prepped, should you decide. If not, we'll void it. So essentially, they took out the building permit fees. It's based on the work they were going to do and the cost of the, the construction. At the time, it was two hundred and fifty thousand. Building permit was a little over, it was almost twenty-one hundred dollars. He has since gotten plans from them and from his contractor that, um, they're actually not doing anything upstairs, and they're just putting a garage in. Um, there's not going to be any type of occupancy permit. There's no growth permit applied for. And he is recommending a refund of nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. And certainly, you know, said that he would keep an eye on it. If they decided to do something else, then, you know, the building permit would go back out. And he did, um, keep fees for the processing of the refund. But he said that this was the first refund he's moved forward since he's been in the position. Cause I was concerned about, you know, making it a habit of, so, but that's all the paperwork.
Basically, they wanted to build.
They want, if something happened.
They wanted to build, you know, a huge thing, and they shrunk it down to build something.
Something happened and they couldn't, right, so. And he did have, um, the new, the refund is based on the new assessment of a hundred and forty thousand, and those are numbers that O'Donnell's came up with, not him.
Okay, do we have a motion to refund the building permit fee?
I'll make a motion to refund the building permit fee? Or a portion of the building permit fee.
All in favor? And we don't sign anything?
No.
Deputy Fire Chief Appointments?
So at last week's meeting, you instructed me to create the two deputy fire chief appointments, um, in reviewing the ordinance.
I asked to have the ordinance reviewed.
Huh?
I asked to have the ordinance reviewed, because I think there was a clause in there.
There.
Yep.
All right, so, and, and that's all, you know, well and good. You can review it and make the changes. It's an ordinance that has to go before the people, but that doesn't help us with the appointments now.
We've got to reconvene the commission.
So it says, the fire chief, three years, two deputy chiefs shall be recommended to the selectman for appointment by a seven-member fire commission. So we can't just reappoint them without the recommendation. Which leads us to, that commission's terms are all expired. Because we, you know, I mean, we essentially, when their job was completed, we did not reappoint them.
Right.
So the first step is to contact the commission and see if they're all interested. Have them to call a meeting, make a recommendation on the two, meet with the chief, and then put it back before the board. In the meantime, they don't have, you know, it's important that your fire chief know that they're not, you know.
Yeah.
They're not in that position in the meantime, so we'll try to move as quick as we can, if we can find a.
So they're not able to work?
They can work.
Okay.
They just can't sign their name as a deputy fire chief.
Yeah, they'll be firefighters.
They're just fire, they're, not just, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
They're firefighters. We might have a fire rescue commissioner chair here that might help us move this along, if he's still interested. Former chair.
That would, that would be you, Dr. Williams.
One less call I got to make. Thank you. All right, so.
E, okay. So, Dr. Williams will be.
I'll contact everybody and ask, and I'll notify him, and he can schedule a meeting from there.
Okay. EMT paramedic hourly rate?
The fire chief, um, after reevaluating positions, um, after the three percent increase, the EMT paramedic is at sixteen thirty-one. He is proposing that she be moved up to seventeen to better in line her with the per diems in that same position.
Actually, firefighter paramedic.
I'm sorry. Firefighter paramedic.
I know when we hired her, when we hired the person for that position, we didn't put them at a high rate. We brought him in at a lower rate, based on what we had for some of the per diems and some of the areas around us. Um, we purposely kept it low somewhat, so there was some room in there in case we had overtime with that individual. So, they've been in there, person's been in there a year now, and just over a year. And I think it is time to kind of adjust it and bring it up to.
And we did, um, the salary that was approved by the townspeople, obviously divided by the forty hours still, there's, it lessens the room for overtime, but it doesn't look like that it's a position that gets a lot of overtime anyways. They'd have to stay within that budget either way.
The overtime on that position basically comes at, I think they work till, was it to four o'clock?
I think it's eight, seven to four, something like that.
Seven to four.
Four tens.
Um, yeah, seven to four. So if they go on a rescue call at three thirty, they might not get back to the station till six thirty.
Right.
So it, I mean, it's kind of a crapshoot as to when they get a call, but it just basically covers that little time period there with the overtime. And I don't think, I don't think they've had four times in a year.
And he can always adjust her schedule the remainder of the week. If we get towards the end of the budget and your account's running low, then we just.
Yep.
Stays late one day, she leaves early or not, I mean, just work it out.
Yep, yep. No, I have no problem with it. I'd make a motion, we, we adjust the pay accordingly.
I second that.
And we've done discussion, so all in favor?
That was from what to what, sixteen thirty-one to seventeen?
Seventeen.
Sheriff recognition.
This Friday, the fourteenth, at three P M, the sheriff has invited, um, us down to be part of the recognition for the, um, lady and the dog that found the missing little boy up on, um, is that Hussy Hill? Hussy Hill Road. Uh, so they're bringing her in and bringing the animal in, and they're going to do a little bit of a recognition, so he's invited the board. I have been emailing and communicating with him about York County, maybe possibly getting a dog. I just didn't know if it was ever a conversation that had come up. There's so many grants and so many things out there. Hearing the story that happened on Hussy Hill and the amount of time it took to get someone down, and then we had a situation in Chapley where I live, um, on Backroad, similar, that they had a, um, an individual that, um, they had quite a situation. Anyway, so the state police's dogs ended up coming in, but it was a couple of hours, and they eventually, you know, the dog solved the problem. So he's asked me if we could just kind of sit down and talk about the whole dog idea for York County, so I'm going to go, and thought maybe somebody might want to come along.
Um, yeah. What?
Neither. It would definitely, it would definitely be in his budget. But I can assure you that, that when it comes to those types of things, that people are giving, and people like to train those dogs to donate them. Um, you've got a deputy that would take the dog on. You know, there's, there's a lot. We certainly wouldn't, you know, it would all be on him. But without a little help.
Somebody's got to, somebody's got to push the idea forward.
Right, and I, I mean, that's just my opinion, and I, and I did it, you know, as not only an employee of Acton, but when I, what I saw in Chapley a week or so ago with the, the dog, I mean, they can be resources, good resources.
Can happen in two hours before that, a lot can happen in two hours, especially at night, you know, on a rainy, cold night, and you've got a little child lost.
I mean, anyway, so the recognition, if you wanted to go, um.
Oh, I can't go Friday.
I just got to think, we need to make sure that the Maloney's know. I don't know if they've been called, but I'm going to write myself a note. I imagine that sheriff would have invited them, but we should double check.
Probably. But I'll sit with you for the dog discussion, but I can't go Friday.
Well, that's, it's happening at the same time.
Oh, it is? No, you can't go. Sorry.
It's just, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, a very early step, but I just thought, you know, I'd. Put a plug in. Uh, we, I'm sorry, um, I did get one, I had one other person that asked to be on the agenda of this meeting. Um, I did not put her on there, so she's going to speak on a public comment.
Okay.
And I'm hoping that you'll allow her to go first, and she's been kind enough to sit through the selectmen's meeting.
Can I just add an M?
Oh, M? Sure.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up that, I, I think I mentioned it to you, but it was just unpassing, that I think there's a vacancy on the road committee.
Yes.
If you want to.
Well, you asked me for a listing of, of all of the positions. Yes.
Okay.
And I will, um, have that for you soon.
Okay.
There was some discrepancy, and maybe Mrs. Hart, when we go over the bridges, can lead a little insight. It looks like someone was a few years back, maybe elected more than once.
Okay.
So, not elected more than once, but the charms are overlapping.
Oh, okay.
So, but we can, we can work it out.
And now we're on to public comment. Hi.
Thank you for having me. My name's Bobby Stormin', and, um, we are looking, my husband and I are looking to, um, apply to the state of Maine for a cannabis cultivation license. So we are, um, showing our proposal to prospective towns who don't have moratoriums or prohibitive ordinances at this time, just to see if there's a partnership out there for us in this new industry. So I'm just going to present our pla- our plan. My husband and I live, we actually grew up in Lincoln, Maine, which is about an hour north of Bangor, so, um, very familiar with Maine. We actually lived in southern Maine for about four years before we moved over to Farmington, New Hampshire. And the neighboring state right here. Um, we both have advanced degrees. Uh, we have degrees from UMaine and UNH. Uh, my husband has an MBA from the Whittamore School of Business, and I have a master's of education. And we both have successful corporate careers, and I also had a successful teaching career. Uh, we've lived in Farmington, New Hampshire for seventeen years, and we're very involved in our community. I'm a library trustee. I'm also president of the Autism Education Fund, and my husband is a planning board alternate in our town. Uh, our vision is to own and operate a mid-size cannabis farm, and by mid-size, I mean anywhere from ten to twenty thousand square feet. Um, the largest facility that they are licensing, according to the law as it currently stands, is thirty thousand square feet. So we're definitely going to be, um, not the smallest, but not the largest. We are looking to produce other high-yield crops, such as lavender and garlic and hanging baskets, um, in the future. And this is going to be a family business, and we are hoping to provide to the local tax base and, as well as provide some high-paying jobs. We are looking to do this, um, in a greenhouse-type of environment, in a farming-type of environment. Um, this is just some pictures of what that might look like. And kind of our plan, uh, right now, we are looking to obtain that municipal sponsorship. Um, a lot of people are finding that they have invested in communities. Um, they haven't been honest about what they're doing, and they're locked into a situation where a town has done a moratorium or a prohibitive policy. So, you know, we just really want to be open about what we want to do, and see if there's a community that would welcome, um, our business. Um, then we're going to apply for that state cultivation license. Uh, we are looking to purchase a home and cultivation site in a community. Um, we are fortunate enough where we're not already established in a place in the state of Maine, so we do have some flexibility of where we bring our investment to. The medicinal growers who are looking in that first round, a lot of them are already located in sites, so they don't have that flexibility that we do. Um, phase one, we're thinking November two thousand seventeen. Uh, we would like to erect a six thousand square foot commercial greenhouse. We'd be investing in well-septic as well as a processing building, um, and then we would hope to get that license in February of two thousand eighteen. The reality is, we might make this investment in a town that's willing to support us, and we may never receive a license. Um, the process is going to be very competitive. They have an eight hundred thousand square foot canopy in the entire state. Um, states like Colorado don't have a maximum canopy, so if you want to grow in Colorado, you can grow in Maine. That's not going to be the case. It's going to be very competitive on who gets those licenses. Um, phase two would probably be August two thousand eighteen. Uh, we would want to erect that second square foot, uh, second sixteen thousand square foot commercial greenhouse. And we would be looking to possibly get a retail store at a separate location. Um, we are going to be living on-site. We do not want a retail store, um, in our grow facility. We don't want people coming to that facility. So any retail site that we do get into would not be, um, it probably wouldn't be in Acton. We may never get into the retail market. We might just sell wholesale. So it's, the industry's just very unknown right now. Um, but we definitely would not be locating a store, um, at our cannabis facility. And then phase three would be, um, a third six thousand square foot greenhouse, and introducing those secondary crops like lavender, garlic, and flowers. Um, something to note about our expansion plans, if we are awarded, let's say, an eighteen thousand square foot license, and we don't get up to that capacity within a year, then we lose it. So if we only get to that second greenhouse, we would have a maximum growing capacity of the twelve thousand square feet. So, you know, that's something that's really unknown as well, how that would roll out. Um, our operations are going to be the commercial greenhouse approach, and the reason we're going with this route is because it does require sixty percent less energy than your indoor grows. Um, there are some proven odor, odor control systems that come with these greenhouses. They are designed for the hog industry and, um, the chicken industry. So, um, odor issues aren't a concern with the greenhouses. We'll also be providing, um, twenty-four-seven security. Uh, the greenhouses would be within a fenced perimeter. We would have video surveillance, um, and we will also be living on-site. So, um, it will be a secure facility. Uh, some of the products that we're looking to do, uh, we are looking for that boutique or craft strain for the recreational use. Um, we really want to have those different types of strains that maybe target, um, somebody who isn't able to sleep, or somebody who has appetite issues, things like that. So not necessarily what you can find, um, in all of the stores. We want to kind of be unique. And we're also going to be looking to grow those CBD strains for the herbal remedies. Um, there is a big concern that the, uh, medical caregivers are going to get squeezed out when the recreational mar- market takes over. There's a lot of really good medicine that's being produced for kids in the state of Maine, uh, for people dying with cancer and things like that. So we really want to make sure that those types of strains, because those types don't get you high. So unless you're really focusing on, um, the herbal remedies, um, a lot of your recreational people are not going to be growing those. And we just want to make sure that, um, the medicine benefits are still out there if that medical market does go away. So we do have some plans for that as well. And we're going to look at the gourmet garlic, lavender, and bun, uh, lavender butters and oils, and the flowers as well. Um, you might be thinking, why would we want you to come to our town? Um, we think that we are going to be the right-sized partner in this new industry for the state of Maine. Uh, Maine's never going to get another economic opportunity like this with a totally new, um, market with already the demand there. Um, we are going to be that small-to-mid-size operation. We can increase the tax base. We can provide good jobs. Um, we are going to be living on-site, so we will be, um, a good neighbor. I don't want to live any place that is unpleasant to live, and I wouldn't expect my neighbors to want to live next to an unpleasant place as well. Um, we. Um, we will be good neighbors, we are involved in our community, um, we are going to practice, um, green practices. We'd like to, uh, recycle our water, recycle our fertilizer, um, go with, um, you know, the energy of the sun and things like that. And we really want to go with that family farm approach. And this, this last page is just kind of some of the, um, projected revenue for when it does become legal in the state of Maine. Um, I know right now the law is being worked on, there's a bunch of different variations out there. Um, I don't know how all of this is going to settle out by February 2018, but we're just looking for a community that might be interested in our business. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Uh, I just was going to ask what CBD stood for, but I.
I think it's, it's cannabis, cannabis di, cannabis diol. Um, there's two types, there's, um, the CBD varieties and the THC varieties. When you go into a store in Colorado, you're looking for recreational use, you're going to get, um, this THC variety. Um, if you're going to a caregiver in Maine, um, my father is actually a stage-four lung cancer patient, he has a caregiver, um, and he gets a lot of the CBD varieties, he can get it in, um, a capsule form, um, they can do, uh, I know the caregiver he works with has a lot of, um, pediatric patients who take it in a gummy form and things like that, so it does. Yeah, you, you could, you don't get high, it's, it's really that medicinal aspect of the plant. And, um, you can grow strains that are very high in CBD properties and strains that are very high in THC. And then you do have a couple of strains that have a little of both, um, some types of medicines you want mostly CBD, but you might need a little THC for like an attention deficit disorder or something like that, so. Um, the Maine caregiver industry is really amazing, there is probably about 100 caregivers that are doing some really amazing things with this as a medicine, so, um. And then the recreational market's going to open up as well for somebody who doesn't qualify, um, under the rules for the medicinal, could still get that, um, CBD variety. So if you're, if you're talking about a child who's getting, um, cannabis therapy, they're probably getting a CBD type of.
Okay.
String.
Well, thank you for your presentation, I will be honest that there are other people out there, they haven't come to the board, but they're wondering if we as a select board are going to place any moratoriums, so there is talk about that. Um, most, mostly about the, um, retail stores and social clubs, but.
Mm-hmm.
I haven't had anybody approach a moratorium about a growing facility, but.
I, I know that, um, a lot of people are, when they are in towns, they are asking if, if they are going to look at a moratorium or a ban, that they, they separate, there's five classes of licensers. Um, one is a testing facility, the other is the cultivation facility, um, the retail store, the social club, and I don't remember the fifth one, I'm sorry. But, um, you know, they don't want their town, their streets lined with retail stores, they don't want a social club in town. But, um, you know, the thing that's really going to provide the jobs, the higher-paying jobs, is that cultivation facility, whether it's an indoor cultivation facility, a farm-type of thing. Um, in Colorado, some of the biggest job growth is with the cannabis industry right now, and they're not, um, minimum-wage jobs. So, but if the state does let towns institute, um, a tax, then you're going to want a retail, you know, your ta, your citizens might want a retail store in your town, because that's going to be the tax revenue. Um, your, your cultivation facilities, you're going to be able to charge an annual license fee to collect tax revenue there and whatever increases in property value, but you don't have that, you know, that overturn of money. But right now, there is no option in the law for towns to collect a tax. I, I think that there's some amendments in there, but I don't know where that's going to work out, so. Unfortunately, this industry is just, it's so unknown, and it's, it's scary to a lot of people, so, um. Yeah, I, I, I would just advise you, if you are going to think of a moratorium, if you just think about separating it out, because you do have a lot of caregivers, I don't know if you have medicinal growers in town?
I don't either.
Um, they are actually, the way the law is written right now, they have the first round to get those licenses, so that is, that could be like a million-dollar lottery win right there. And so if they're already here and they have your blessing, then their application's going to look better than somebody else who's in a town with a moratorium, and, um, you know, I feel bad for a lot of the medical growers right now who have their medicinal infrastructure in place, who want to go to the recreational market, but there is a moratorium, and they're going to miss out because those licenses are going to be gone within 90 days once they're given. So, um, it definitely is something that towns have to think about, and it's, it's really hard to get a town to say, "We welcome your business right now," because it's very unknown.
I think I see a public hearing, possibly. Because I'm not making that decision.
It definitely is, I mean, can I?
Talk about it more next week, you're running into your road committee.
Yeah, I just, I just want to caution, I mean, a lot of towns are saying, "Oh, we don't even want to, we're not even going to look at it until November." But with these licenses coming out in February of 2018, people don't have time to find a, a town that accepts them and stuff, so, you know, they're going to go wherever, and it really is an opportunity for small towns in Maine to get some economic development where they wouldn't have otherwise.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
I just have two questions. First of all, I would totally agree that marijuana is here to stay. Uh, we are on the border of New Hampshire that has not recognized it, however, uh, two of our borders are with Canada, which nationwide will go on legalized, uh, marijuana for recreation starting in January of this next year. So we're going to be surrounded by it. My question is, who are the potential buyers for the, uh, various strains of marijuana that you would plan to grow? Outside of the state, is this buyers?
You, it cannot cross state lines.
Is it any, okay, so will it be here in Acton? Because I, I think the question about.
Yeah, I think.
This would be something we do like in a public hearing.
Yes, I agree, because, you know, the retail is, is, is a whole separate issue. And being on the state line, I could foresee a huge number of stores opening up if it's at all legal. My other question is, what sort of license fees are the states of Colorado and Washington, uh, levying on planters?
We'd have to get that.
Yeah.
And I think it's up to, I think the way the law is written for Maine is it's up to each individual municipality how much they want to charge for the license.
Good questions. Thank you.
I'll put it on the agenda for next week, and you guys can talk about it if you want to move forward with the public hearing.
Any, yeah, yeah, definitely. Any other public comments?
Hello.
Hi.
Barbara Seaco. Uh, last Saturday, I went to, um, Wilson Lake Association meeting, yearly meeting, and there was a gentleman there that spoke about a new invasive species that concern, should concern all the lakes and ponds in this area. So I'm hoping maybe, uh, next time you have a meeting or, um, a gathering, that you'll be able to talk about this to the general public with more information. Uh, that's the first part of this, and the second part is, um, on the, um, let's see, 14th of August, from 9:00 to 11:30, there's a lady by the name of Lori Callahan, and she's an expert on the, uh, identifying these species. And she's going to take out a group of people, 10 to 12, and they go out and paddle around the lake, and she shows them the various types of things and what could invade your property. And every time a new species that comes, this, this, this new species is called the Eurasian Nyad. And if it gets in, it's very difficult to get rid of. And when you have this on your property, it makes it, um, devalued. So, that's for your information, should do what you want.
Where is she doing, is she doing it on Wilson?
Uh, Jean has more information, on Wilson is she?
Yes.
An email or a contact or something you can forward us, like and forward to the board with all?
I have, um.
Sounds like.
You have, I have the, um, Facebook information. Actually, I'll give you this.
Okay, I'll copy it and forward it to them.
Okay.
All right.
So that's it.
Thank you.
It's kind of import, important to know what's going around, you don't want to devalue property.
It sounds like she should be visiting more than one lake.
Oh, goodness, Barbara, you're awesome, look at you.
But I had to copy it, because I couldn't make it print.
Yep.
That's my stupid thing.
No, it's perfect, um, do you have her name, so, actually, I'll call you tomorrow if I can't find.
Um, where is she?
Callahan.
Callahan, uh.
Oh, yeah, Lori Callahan, okay.
And she's an expert.
All right, if I can't find her, I'll call you.
Okay.
So I'm going to send you a Facebook link, sorry.
Jeanne Killie, um, president of Wilson Lake Association, and we have the meeting Saturday, so I just want to support Barbara and, um, also issue an invitation if anybody wants to come to the paddle. I think it's important at this time, Acton seems to have a little bubble over our town. We don't have any of the lakes or streams with invasive plants, but it's all around us, it's everywhere. It's just a matter of time, and I think we need to pay more attention to the issue because towns like Limerick, Milton Mills, Wakefield are spending hundreds of thousands of dollars every year to try to combat these invasives. And the lake property values go down 20 to 30%. That's the base for our taxes, and that means if you don't live on a lake, you better be concerned, because if our taxes go down, yours have to go up. So please be aware. Thanks.
Hello. Uh, Steve, like, um, on behalf of the Loom Pond Betterment Association, I've sent you all email back in April looking for somebody maybe to come and speak at our, our meeting on July 22nd. It's here at Camp Nutter on, on Loom Pond, so, um, I was looking for maybe a name to, to put on our agenda, I got a meeting in about 30 minutes.
Well, I, I work on Saturdays. That's the problem, a lot of your association, road association, lake associations are on Saturdays, and I actually do have two other part-time jobs because the select person is a part-time job. Um, I work on Saturdays, and I'm sorry, I can't make them.
It happens, you can't be everywhere. Ed, Kim?
I've got that cemetery.
Oh, cemetery that day?
That day.
Poor Kim, she's like, oh my goodness.
Yeah.
Well, no.
I know.
I get the blueberry farms that, and, um, let me see what I can do.
What type of information would, would you be looking for from the board?
Basically, the ongoings of the town, would, would maybe important for them to be aware of, uh.
If we weren't able to send someone, I mean, if they drafted a letter that kind of.
Yeah, we could read it.
Kind of put it all together, I mean, I think it sounds like they're going to try, but if nothing, worst case, I could draft a letter that they could review to kind of wrap up the prior year.
Yeah, sure, that'd be great, I appreciate it, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. You said it was Steven?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm the vice president, um, second in line.
Okay, so, any more public comments? Okay, I just want to, um, express condolences to, um, Dick Neal and his family, he lost his wife, Rhea, on the 4th of July after some struggle with illness, and, um, we send him our sympathies.
We also lost somebody else in town, um, I'm going to give our condolences to John Houston, I don't know.
A good guy.
Been around a long time, I know he, um, had some health issues, and I believe it was the 4th of July, he passed away too. Uh, I think they have been services at the end of the week.
Friday.
Friday night.
Friday night, okay, all right.
If, I mean, since we're, um, so most of you have seen too by now under, I guess, announcements, we are putting together a fundraiser as we've done for different families and different events. We have a fundraiser going on this, um, Sunday at Iron Tales from 4:00 to 8:00 for Lori Driscoll, who, um, has stage-four cancer and also has, um, quite a battle ahead of her, so we are, um, trying to work on that too.
And on the brighter side, a shout-out to Terry Minahan for pulling off a, a really good Acton Pride Day, um, last Thursday at the pond. It was from.
What? Good turnout?
It was, well, it was a good turnout for the music piece, or starting on 5:30. It was 3:00 to 8:00, but I'm not sure, my, many people couldn't get down there for the early part of it, but we had a lot of good vendors down there, really good talent that showed up, so, thank you, Terry, for putting that on. And after a long meeting, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
All in favor? Good night.